Ladies and gentlemen, if you will take your seats, I will call this meeting to order. Mr. Greenhill? Mr. Greenhill, please. We are missing a number of our presidents. Dr. Moreno for our TCC connect, they're all in Atlanta at Achieving the Dream Conference. So, doing the Lord's work, so we excuse them. I want to call the February 25th special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District to order and welcome all of you. Are there any public comments? None. Let me bring all of us to the same page and review the process to this date. The requests for proposals from firms interested in assisting Tarrant County College in the search process for our new chancellor were distributed in early January to be sent directly to the procurement officer, Mr. Michael Herndon. Those were received by deadline in early February, were reviewed by Mr. Herndon, and then distributed by email to the Board of Trustees. And Shelley, if you'll show the scoring sheet. This is what the Board considered as we tallied our scores. And those scores were returned to Mr. Herndon, and he put them all together for us. Gold Hill was the unanimous first choice of the Board and will be our first interview. They've been invited here today for presentation and discussion and possible decision by the trustees. The entire process will be conducted in open session. Shelley, if you'll display Doctors Pulliam and Kinslow on our screen. They're seated with us, but I thought it might be interesting if any of you have not had an opportunity to review their bios, very impressive. Gold Hill is associates is based in Jackson, Mississippi, from where Dr. Pulliam drove today. But he has a Texas connection with Dr. Stephen Kinslow. And as you can see, if you'll scroll up to Dr. Kinslow's bio, their personal and professional credentials are impressive and their company's record of leadership placements is impressive as well. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Pulliam, you first. Are you all going to co-present? Dr. Pulliam?
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to all of you. I'm just going to do kind of an introduction, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Kinslow to join me and just introduce himself. Now, I have a 40-page PowerPoint, and if you twist my arm, I can go through every one of those pages for you this afternoon. I see no, okay, no unanimous on that. I'll go with the three-page version of it then, basically of my introduction. Basically, a little bit about myself again, you saw my resume. I'm president of the company, I've been in this role for now three years, I worked with the company for five. The company was founded in 1990 by Dr. Bob Behringer. And I purchased the company from him three years ago and worked with him two years before that. We exclusively do community college searches. We do not do other university searches or other sector searches. We specialize in community colleges. All our associates are also former or sitting presidents. As a matter of fact, we have one sitting president now and all the other contract associates with us are work as our consultants, but also have served or serving in the role of president. So we know the job. My background, I've served three community colleges as president. My last one was President of Portland Community College in Portland, Oregon, where I served for nine years as CEO there. I also served as Vice Chancellor of Community Colleges of New York. That was 29 community colleges which I supervised and also conducted searches with at that point in time. So that's just a little bit about my background. My Texas connection here is Dr. Kinslow, I'll let him get up and share a few words with you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you today. I have spent my entire career, really, except for one year when I taught junior high. The other 39 years have all been in community colleges. I started at El Centro College, which you're familiar with in the Dallas area. I have a lot of family, friends and relatives in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. I did my student teaching in Bedford. So, a lot of ties to Texas, obviously. My experiences professionally began at El Centro in business services. I then had experience in student services. I went from the business office as the Personnel Coordinator for the campus, essentially in supervising registration, to Financial Aid Director. And then went to Austin to go to graduate school and took a job with Austin Community College as Assistant Dean. I joke and say I had every position basically in the history of ACC during that 39 years in administration, from Assistant Dean, Associate Dean, VP, Executive Vice President, interim president twice. And then I agreed toward the end of my career with ACC to be president for two years. I did it for six and a half. Loved it, but I say those things to echo what Preston said in that we have a very deep understanding of what it takes to be a CEO. I am proud of all of the achievements that we made as a team at Austin Community College. I'm a big believer that these searches are all about finding the right match for your institution and for your culture and for your history, but typically looking for people with demonstrated success in visioning, strategic visioning, strategic planning, resource development, and resource allocation. And then the softer skills of being a good communicator, a good influencer, finding people that understand the mission of community colleges. The reputation of your district rests on a lot of people's shoulders. And so, we strive to create a transparent process for you, one that different constituencies will understand. But our goal is to work very closely with the Board and get you the right leader for this college district at this time.
Thank you very much, Steve. And I'll just, again, my concluding remarks are, will be very brief. There are two things that we really work hard with this firm in this process. The first is, we really believe strongly that the way to find the best match for you and for institution as far as your next chancellor is to do personal recruiting. So we spend a lot of time on the phone at conferences or with our network, calling and telling what we feel great candidates, great potential candidates for this job, to recruit them personally. Now, we'll advertise, you'll advertise, and that's also a good way to get the word out. But we feel that the way to get the very best candidates is personal contact, personal phone calls, or personal conversation. The other thing we work very hard at, and that's the reference work. We want you to know with each of these candidates that who will apply, what you really have. Their references will give you glowing remarks, I'm sure they'll tell you their letter of application, how wonderful they are. But we want you to know the real person that you're talking to, what's behind that. And that's where we do what we call, besides a formal reference checking, which we do ourself personally, we do probably twice as many calls in what we call our informal reference checking. Where we're going to call around the country with the contacts we have, and we probably will know at least half of the individuals who would apply for the job. And we make sure you as Board, you as a community in terms of this process, really know what you've got before you in terms, as you get to your semifinalists and finalists in this process. But basically, that's our presentation. I'm not going to go into all the details. You have a copy of our entire presentation there. We described the process a little bit and a marketing piece of it, but we'll be glad to respond to any questions you may have at this time. You can read that. There's also a great newsletter about me there with my picture throughout it. My wife handed that to me last minute, says, "Would you get rid of these?" So, I'm sharing them around the country with you. But that's a little bit about my background. Thank you very much.
Board members, who would like to start? One of the suggestions or proposals in your material that we received was that, excuse me, we engage and involve a large search committee. And I think we still feel the Board that we would like to be a committee of the whole.
All right.
But at some point, when it's appropriate, involve our stakeholders, faculty, staff, and students, so that they
Sure.
help us with the final decision. But as far as the search process, we feel like it'll be more efficient if we go it alone, up to a certain point.
Well-
How do you feel about that?
Overall, our reaction is that as long as you have some steps in the process where it's inclusive, and I noticed in the schedule that I was able to review a little while ago, that you have, as you get down to your finalists, you will have public forums and input at that point. I also understand you've taken input
We have.
from the community, or the internal, external community.
And I-
So you're going to build a profile based on that.
Yes.
So this is quite similar to a search that we went for the Chancellor of Lone Star College System.
Okay.
So quite similar to that. So we see this as quite workable.
Yes, we, in December, created a secure website or email site, so that faculty, staff, students, even the community could send us their suggestions for what they would want or not want in a chancellor.
Exactly.
And I do have about 50 copies of those responses, and this Board has seen all of those as well. So I have that to share with you.
Great. And we'll build a profile from that, and of course, that will direct the search.
Am I representing our views correctly as far as the search committee? Anyone want to differ with me? Okay, questions?
Tell us about how you, I'm interested in how you build your pool. I mean, what, how is this, how is this assembled? And who do you put into this pool? Are these people who are, might be, for example, there's some people we'd like to raid, maybe, maybe not. Do you take suggestions from us? Do you build your own pool? Do you, we'll give you, we'll probably have an evaluation with you on the first meeting, if you're chosen, to determine what kind of chancellor we want. How do you construct a pool structured for us?
Well, first of all-
A pool of candidates, that is.
As you develop your profile and certify it, that's really your statement nationally, what you're looking for, within that description. That's kind of a description in terms of what skill set you're looking for, what requirements you have, what the challenges or priorities here within the college system. Several ways you build that pool. Your advertiser, when people will respond to that. We also believe heavy in nomination. So if you've got names or individuals you think would make a great match, you let us know. We will track those individuals down and have a conversation with them about the possibility of this job. We also do social media on LinkedIn and other ways where we will advertise to just, it's part of getting the story out there, getting the job out there, so you really have a national search. When you get down to, I still think the best way is also the personal recruiting. We probably will have some individuals that we think would be a great match. We will certainly work and contact those individuals, see if they're interested in applying. So those are some ways of feeding in. Now, when you get down to it, once you get your pool of candidates, then you sit down and kind of match in terms of how they respond, in terms of a letter of application, or their resume, et cetera, what they provide. And what happens in that process, the ones who really make the great candidates and the great match tend to kind of rise to the top in the process as you review them. What we will also do, we will help you, as we say, we will probably know at least half or more of the individuals who will apply. And we will do great work in terms of work really hard, let you know what's behind them, who you should probably take a close look at, and who you're probably wasting your time with. So it's kind of a pooling together, it's kind of a team approach. But we will advise you, but in the end, it's your choice.
Who will actually be doing the search? Will be working with the two of you?
Both of us will be.
Okay.
He has, Dr. Kinslow has worked with me now in several searches now in Texas. We've done 13, I think, the last four or five years together, and CEO, and for campus presidents and system CEOs. So he will work with me in terms of this. He has a great network, particularly in Texas, but we both have a great network nationally. But we'll work together on this.
Okay, and I know you know a lot of applicants, but do you represent any of the applicants at all?
We do not. We work for you, we work for the Board in all our searches. We don't have a stable, we don't have, we may have candidates in the past, we may have met in terms of just acquaintances, but no, we don't work for candidates.
Okay, and do you have any policy that restricts you from recruiting somebody you've already placed?
We do stay away from that in terms of, it's kind of a five to six-year window. I have not, in my experience, ever kind of broken that rule. I really, in terms of my experience, never recruited someone we placed, but someone we placed may be interested in applying for this.
Okay.
I would see a number of individuals who may be working for colleges other places, who may be very interested in this job, because it will be a very attractive job nationally.
Right.
So that possibility. But I don't pick up the phone and call
They call, okay.
and recruit away from where we placed.
But you don't shy away from, if somebody did-
I'm not bashful, sir, about that.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir. I want to find you a good candidate.
Okay.
I'm guessing that everywhere you go, they tell you, "Well, this is a unique place, this is really different, and it's a different kind of community." I suspect that you discovered that they are unique in much the same kinds of ways. But I'm wondering if you were just sort of looking, giving us some commonalities of what you're hearing from community colleges when they're looking for someone like this repeatedly? If you could kind of give me your top three or four characteristics?
You know, and I read your strategic plan in terms, it was quite similar to some of the searches we've done in the past. There's some hot kind of items that people are talking about today that I think for any community college, everybody's paying a great deal of attention to. For one, student learning and completion, there's real emphasis on student achievement, and also completing their educational process, their goals. Affordability is a big issue in terms of what's being charged, and students have been able to afford textbooks and fees and those kinds of things. Access is big in terms of community colleges just in general, but even more so because of the rising cost of higher education across the country. Diversity is critical. Social equity now, we're talking with a lot of individuals over the last couple of years about those, particularly Board members who are recruiting, looking for new CEOs, people who have had experiences in those areas or can work at those as a priority. And I also noticed a sense of continuing improvement. You're kind of continually examining what you're doing, and you want to make it better, and have a real commitment about that. But bottom line, people looking for, Board members tend to want people high energy and very passionate about what they're doing, and very ethical in terms of their behavior. So those are some of the kind of common themes we hear.
Okay, this is obviously a big community college.
Right.
And I think our enrollments were one of the top 20 or so in the country.
Right.
Is, do you see a major difference between an institution this size in terms of the leaders you want, or an institution, say, the size of one at Vernon, where you have a couple of thousand students in one campus? Is there, is there like a breakdown of a different kind of person that you need for running such a large organization?
Well, you know, in terms, when you talk about organizations this size as far as community colleges, your pool is somewhat limited, because most community colleges are definitely not this size. They're medium-sized, smaller, 5,000 to 2,000 students. So, a little bit of an oddity in terms of the type of individual you may want to be looking at in terms of experience. This type of operation, this size of operation, you want someone that can balance the sense of particularly multi-campus is here, someone that has a sense of having many kind of compartments to an organization, how do you balance those needs and those priorities within that complex operation? But more visionary in the sense of being very strategic, operating at kind of the leadership level where they're setting the course of the organization, they're visioning, they're working through strategic planning, they're using some requirement to look to raise money, to work with a foundation, or go out and ask for personal gifts in terms of a number of things, and also advocacy piece in terms of working with state legislatures, or those who were elected in terms of representing the college and being the face of the college and promoting the college, those kind of skills. Yes, sir. Correct, sir. Steve, maybe you want to respond to that in terms of what I've seen it, in terms of you're looking for a strong, passionate leader that is a good communicator, can work with many different components and individuals, and have that ability overall. In terms of the difference, I have worked at both a unionized community college and one that's not. I did an interim presidency last year over at Mountain View College in the Dallas system. And I found that there was kind of one step you could eliminate in terms of as you consult to do things, as you work with groups around the college. I had a sense that I had more, I could move a little faster in terms of, in terms of getting things done. But that's kind of a, just if I'm seeing, I don't know, Steve, if you have a response to that?
Well, the only thing I would add to the comments is also the role of CEO in community partnerships and developing stronger relationships with various constituencies in your taxing authority throughout your county. And that, to me, is also one of the differences. If you have people with experience in multi-campus, larger districts, they tend to be a little more seasoned than smaller colleges, I think, when it comes to actually forging partnerships and having certainly a more complex relationship externally. And so, you know, you need somebody that is a good leader, and as Preston's saying, certainly someone with a strategic vision, but there's operational expertise also. And the real challenge, I think, I used to say I felt like an orchestra leader as a CEO. Now, you're trying to make things hum and work to the best optimum for all the faculty and staff, but you're also trying to increase the public's respect and appreciation for what you do, and building that support over time. And so you need leaders who really can connect not only with their faculty and staff and their students, but who especially can connect with community leaders and state leaders.
Also, sir, I want to address the issue, the union, non-union issue, in the sense of, I'm very hesitant to really particular organization the size that's unionized, if it were united to bring a non-union experienced leader here. They can get in trouble very quickly in terms of the politics of a union, but vice versa, the other way around in terms of a union person with experience at a large organization could come here, and there's one less kind of political kind of component you have to worry about. So that's kind of how I would look at it in terms. So if you don't have a non-union experience-
So you don't see, it'd be a disadvantage to have a chancellor or CEO who's from a union.
I don't see any problem with that. It would be, the problem would be the other way around.
Okay, as has already been mentioned, we're a very large institution.
Correct.
Supposedly the 12th largest college or university in the country.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you've done your research on that.
Sure.
Not only do we need somebody that understands the academic side of this, but don't you feel we also need a real CEO, somebody who has business experience, who is capable of handling such a large and diverse business institution as we are? And in that regard, do you ever recruit people that are non-traditional candidates? In other words, people that are real strong in business, and maybe do, or maybe do not have the academic background, as was, as has happened in other colleges and universities, such as University of Texas has a general in charge of the system?
Well, first of all, we're going to react to what you're asked for in terms of the type of leader you're looking. When you build your profile, we're going to base our searching, our personal recruitment off that profile. If you make the profile more general and say you're very interested in non-traditional leadership, we certainly can work in that direction. I'll be honest with you, most of our requests, particularly the last five years, has still been the more traditional type of leader, even for a college this size, someone who has community college experience in a complex organization, who's very visionary and very passionate. But I have been involved in searches where they're asking for non-traditional. That's kind of your call. I think the most important thing here is, as Steve has said, is that you want someone who's visionary, who understands how to operate in a complex environment and operation in college, at the same time to bring all these components together. What I recommend, and what I've seen in terms of the outstanding leaders, is that they have comprehensive experience, not just in one sector, let's say not in just academic affairs or student affairs or business, but they have a comprehensive experience in terms of a number of components within the college itself.
That's where I was getting at, right. And what about some of these new ideas of how to change an institution, how to change education into maybe something like a competency-based model and these kind of things? Are these something that you build into your search model?
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're all besieged with all these things, "Well, what we're doing is not working, we've got to change, we've got to change our culture, we've got to go to something more tuned to what the students are learning versus what is being taught." Does this get involved in your search? I mean, do you put that in one of your parameters?
Dan, go ahead.
When you look at what the student success movement is across the country, it's exactly that. It's saying, "How do we better use public dollars to create higher levels of performance among students?" And so that involves a lot of research, but would be unusual to have any candidates for this position who weren't very well-versed in the national research around doing exactly that. One of the things, too, that I would mention, when you mentioned not just having experience in academic affairs, one of the things that typically comes about internally, and this may be reflecting some of the inputs you've already received, is frequently I will remind faculty that the search is not for a Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, you have someone in that role. The search is for a broader kind of experience. And so, again, it gets back to the expectations, but part of a search is also managing the expectations of your internal constituencies as well. And I think there's a number of ways to do that in the way a search rolls out, and how you communicate about the search during that process. But with you 100%, it's got to have a strong emphasis on that kind of skill set.
Right, yeah, somebody that's open to change and revision and
Right, right.
and trying to do techniques that hopefully have better success than what we've
Right.
had in the past universally of it.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I have, I guess, some comments and certainly some questions. First, reflecting on our former chancellor. She, in a sense, is a non-traditional chancellor, yet all the qualities and characteristics that you've mentioned, she, she had 100%. Going forward with that, she was what, 47, 48 years in the district? She did not have a doctorate, but she was all that, that you've been
Sure.
talking about from the podium- Talking about from the podium. So my question is this. Having read some of the comments from our faculty and comments online, we have differences of opinions of whether this person should have a doctorate or not.
Okay.
Chancellor Hadley did not have one and we were criticized for that.
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, we have also read that some don't want an internal candidate and some want a national.
Right.
So how do you, I guess, what's the thought on how we work an internal candidate? And do they get any special courtesy or what's the thought on that?
Well, first of all, our recommendation would be that any internal candidate would go through the very exact same process than any external candidate would be. So we don't believe in any courtesy interviews, for example. If this person is really qualified and meet all the requirements and they, then they apply just like any other candidate, but they would be treated the same. Courtesy interviews or those type of interviews, the person may not meet all the requirements, but because they're internal, we want to at least give them their due and, and a chance to, to interview. We don't recommend that. We recommend that they be treated equally with everybody else, just the same.
The other comment I just wanted to make, as trustee Carter did. When we are in sessions with a union, say, president or board, there's a different dynamic. And so it's hard for me to explain and understand the differences of.
Right.
Of somebody coming from a unionized.
Right.
College, but I would be perceptive or my radar would be up a little bit more on a candidate like that just because there is a, a different dynamic. I can't explain it, but it just is.
Mm-hmm.
We're proud.
How about the doctorate? Did you, were you going to ask the question? Did some of the comments talk about the doctorate degree of having a doctorate or not having a doctorate?
Yes.
Is that critical in your view?
Well, first of all, ninety percent of community college presidents have a doctorate. That's, that's what's out there. Most of your candidates who apply for this position will have a doctorate. It's up to you as the board of trustees or directors to determine what that, what that degree should be. We recommend certainly a master's degree and, and maybe a doctorate preferred, but leave it open. You, why you're brought, in terms you're brought in your pool by doing that, at the same time you bring in perhaps more non-traditional candidates. That's quite possible, but that's your call.
Yes, thank you all so much for coming. You talked, Dr. Kinslow, about the culture, about our culture. And so I'd like to just find out a little bit about what sort of research you've done about our culture. And then also, how do you expect, what do you expect to do going forward to help us in this process so that we could find a candidate that will somehow, you know, fit in with the culture that we have?
All right. Well, since you addressed Dr. Kinslow, I will let him respond to that.
I haven't researched your culture in depth, but I have talked to a few. What I mean by that comment is institutions are all different. I mean, when you look at fifty community college districts in Texas, they have the same mission and there are many overlapping goals around student success that everyone has. But each of those fifty institutions is quite different. And so understanding the culture of a particular district is helpful, I think, in building that profile. It's part of what we would typically go through with the board and asking you, what are the things that you're proudest of in this district and that you think are important? I did four searches in the past year with the Lone Star College system. And I can tell you that each of their campuses was very, very different. And one in particular was extremely proud of its reputation for having been founded to be a campus of innovation. And they felt like they have drifted somewhat from that. But that was a key element about their culture that they wanted respected and they wanted to see a renewed energy around. And so that's what I mean when we talk about what makes Tarrant a great place for students, what makes it a great place for faculty and staff, and identifying if there are culturally specific things, you know, you're celebrating your jubilee. And so I'm sure y'all have spent a lot of time celebrating things that would be marked cultural characteristics of the district. Do I know all of those at this point? No. But again, I would hope that that would emerge as we build the profile.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. Can you tell me how many current searches the two of you are involved in?
At this point, he's involved in none. And that's, so he will be a great help if we get a chance to work with you in terms of that. Also, his location in Austin makes him close by and so it makes it very convenient. I'm involved now in three searches, two of them I'm closing off and one I'm just beginning to sit down and talk about the profile. It's going to be some while before that starts up. Here's what I try to do and, and Steve, he basically just takes one search at a time. What I try to do is never overlap my recruitment period for each of those colleges. So I'm not trying to recruit for you and another college at the same time. And that's usually a four or five week period in which we're out recruiting. But that's our load at this point.
Okay, so that, my next question was about our schedule. When we've talked informally, we've talked about a very aggressive schedule. And I wanted to know, has that been shared with you and do you think you can meet that?
It has been shared with us and we thank you, we think we certainly can meet that. What you've done, you've done some upfront work, basically, in terms of gathering information and that's very important. Usually that alone would take two or three weeks sometimes. But starting out with that, starting out with this group being a committee to hold as far as the search committee, that condenses a lot of time needed. So that key period in terms of which you would be recruiting, you're still in this academic year. Also, I notice you will include the, the national convention, which is a great recruiting time in terms for us to go out and recruit and talk about this job and get candidates interested. So we feel you're, we've got a, a great time schedule here and quite doable.
Okay, I, I noticed in some of your materials, you talked about you, your company producing the publications.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, we pretty, think we have very good graphic staff here. And I wanted to know, would you be amenable to us producing our own publication?
That is certainly your call. I think we built in a proposal, a proposed budget for you in which to do that. That's your budget and your responsibility. Where we come in is, is advising in terms of what should be in the brochures, what candidates are looking for, basically the requirements, the description of the culture of the organization and those kinds of things. We can advise, but we don't really actually write or recruit them, or, or write the brochures.
So could you talk to me, thank you, a little bit about the application process that you think works best?
I think it's important upfront that you really put, and you're doing that, you're putting in great work and giving great attention to your profile because that's what sells the job. That's what people will read out in, across the country who's interested about the job. And then in your process, we recommend that you have some type of instrument for them to respond to that profile. To talk, for example, if you feel collaboration is important here as, as a cultural value, how did, how have they collaborated in the past? How would they see their work style relating to working here at the college? So usually that's a letter. We call it a cover letter, a letter of application, where they will try to address that profile and those priorities for you. You would want an updated resume or CV so you can see year by year what their professional experience is all about, a little bit about them. Some will ask for transcripts. I, I suggest they probably should be made available upon request. But those two things are, you want a letter of application responding to your profile and you want to see a resume along with a list of references. And we suggest supervisors, subordinates, peers, faculty, that sort.
What do you think about us requesting a video clip as a part of the application process?
That's being done more and more the last couple of years. People use video interviews mostly to determine, let's say you have a pool of forty individuals or fifty individuals and you want to narrow that pool down to like seven or eight semi-finalists. Instead of asking them all to come to be interviewed, you might have a video clips in it. You review the video and you determine from that who you'd like to move along in the process as a finalist. So that's being done more and more. I'll be honest with you, candidates hate it, quite honestly. They want to face-to-face contact. But more and more colleges, for financial reasons or whatever reasons, are doing more video work.
And so have you had that as a part of the initial application, maybe responding to one of the questions? Instead of getting everything in writing, having a part of that done orally and in a video?
We usually, from what I've seen, we do both. We have the letter, a cover letter, the resume and the references. And then also notify them if they're selected as, as a finalist or semi-finalist. They may be required to do a video clip, kind of set them up for that so they know about it. So I've seen it kind of in two steps. I've never seen just kind of one together. I don't know about you, Steve, but I.
One of the things in the reference checks that always emerges is actually seeing video clips of people either addressing their board or their chamber or general assemblies or whatever. I really frankly prefer that where they don't know what we may find and look at. I've requested that a time or two from, from people where to direct me to that. But that, I think, is a more natural experience where you really see how they perform in front of an audience and how they communicate. If you ask them to do it as part of the process, I think it's a little bit more artificial in that you're not seeing them actually in action on their job.
Perhaps. I, I actually have a different view about that. As in terms of how much detail and effort goes into creating the cover letter.
Yes.
And the resume.
Mm-hmm.
It's very telling to see how much the candidate would put into developing a video clip to send us.
Yes, yes. You could, you could certainly do that as part of the process. But again, in doing the deeper dives and checking people out, we will find other examples as well to do that. So to me, it would be an enhancement of that. One of the things in all of the searches that I've done in the last two years, we have specified set lengths for certain things. There's nothing worse than having somebody submit a sixty-five page resume. People are not going to wade through sixty-five pages. And if someone can't condense and present that profile of themselves, that's very telling too. But again, that would be something we would respect if the board chooses to go in that direction. We can build that into the process.
Thank you.
Okay. No, I, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
We want to obviously see the best possible candidates. And I know in a lot of cases, if, if, if one of the candidates or possible candidates is working for another institution that we're closely associated with or know about, secrecy becomes very important up to a point. We already have some input, as you know, and then, but how do you maintain that secrecy and up to what point? I mean, down to the last two, three candidates is what we're thinking. But how do, how do you address that situation?
Well, this is absolutely crucial, particularly, especially for a sitting CEO or a community college president somewhere else in terms of, in terms of their current position. What we ask is that it be a totally confidential process up until the point you want to name someone or a number as finalist. Once it becomes announced publicly as a finalist, then that's, then that's open. Up until that point, we, we do ask for confidentiality. And basically, in this, in this search where we're working with you as a committee to hold, then we would ask, you know, of course, that, that you would certainly not go out publicly reveal these candidates. And certainly we would not. But yes, that's the point, is kind of confidential up until the point of people named finalist.
Okay. And, and secondly, how do you, how do you recommend that we, if we start out with forty or fifty candidates? How do we, how do we pare that down? Is that something that, that you do? Or should we see all the candidate applications or how, how do you normally work?
Well, what we recommend is that you have all the materials accessible to you so you can take a look at them. We have been asked before, well, why don't you, out of the forty or fifty, why don't you pick seven or eight and just hand those to us and we'll determine from there who the finalists. We, we believe more in an open process that you, you're aware of everybody who applies. Now, what we will do of those forty or fifty, we will make a suggestion in terms of seven or eight that you may really want to take a look at because from our information, informal checks, we feel these are really great individuals who are great matches. But at any point, you know, anyone can be considered as a finalist.
Okay. My, my last question is, you know, we, we, we think we have a pretty good institution. We're a one billion dollar asset, zero debt, you know, and, and we're in a great growing area. But we've also heard in, in all these different conventions we go to that right now, it's a very competitive market out there because the chancellors and presidents are retiring, they're passing on and et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of people are looking for new, new CEOs. So how, how do you view Tarrant County College as a, as an opportunity for a new chancellor?
Well, first of all, you're right. We're in a demographic gap where we have lots of retired baby boomers and not enough to fill the back space in terms of what's needed in that skill set for candidates. So the pools are smaller, quite honestly, and it's a more competitive environment. Probably you will end up with seven to eight really great people and half of them will be in other searches or may have other even offers. So it's a competitive environment. This will be a very attractive job, quite honestly, because of your location, your reputation. Someone shared earlier that you're not carrying any debt. The sense in terms of those who are familiar with the operation here, well, you just have a great reputation nationally. I, I think you're going to get some great candidates here. I think you're going to be very, very competitive because you're exceptional.
Well, actually Conrad answered some of my questions or asked some of my questions. The other one I have, as it relates more or less to video conferencing.
Mm-hmm.
We have that ability and because of our reputation, you know, we might have a number of applicants that maybe seven won't. We might have a benchmark of, say, twelve or fifteen. And maybe that's an opportunity where we could do some video conferencing. So just as an expense situation, but to delineate a pool, is that something that you'd be amenable to?
Sure, sure. I mean, it's for you, we will advise you in terms of what we've seen, our experience in the process, but that sounds very doable, is something that you could work in. Particularly if you get a, a large pool with lots of great candidates and you want to work to pare that down, certainly you could introduce that.
I do just have a follow-up question for Dr. Kinslow. You mentioned that you're local, you're in Austin, is that correct? Okay. So how do you envision that we'll be interacting if you were to, to work with us? How do you envision that interaction will occur, you're being in Austin?
Well, a lot of drive time coming up here. You know, I, I like to work very closely, particularly in the initial phases of. Part of your task is to help educate your search consultant about the things we've been talking about. And then part of ours is to help explain why we think a profile ought to be what the final document might look like in that process. So it's not any big deal for me to come up. Again, I have lots of family and friends in this area, so I'm happy to do that. There's certainly telephone and that sort of thing. But I, I'm very much, I like the face-to-face with the people that we work with.
Do you have a special pass to get through Temple and Florida?
I'd like one. I'd like a helicopter, actually.
We don't have helicopters.
Let me just say, a part of the way we work really go, you know, we like the personal contact. So, so we want a presence with you face-to-face, also sending through the reference checks. When we do those, we want to also provide those face-to-face with you in case there are other questions and things that may come up or things you want us to do to explore further kinds of information, kinds of things. If you want us here doing the interview process, we will be here. So you tell us when you want us and we make sure we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no additional questions. I think I heard you say that Dr. Kinslow is going to be our lead person.
Well, I, I'm kind of listed as lead in terms as president of the company, but he will be, he will work with primarily to several areas. One, working with you on the profile. We will also partner, we will partner together in terms of the personal recruitment and we will also work together regarding the references. But the upfront work in terms of the profile, he will be then the work.
So my question was exactly that. When, when will we, if we decide to work with your firm?
Mm-hmm.
How often can we expect to see you and when will, when will you be here again?
You tell us when you want us here, we'll be here. That's, that's for you to determine. But we'd be as much as you want to, face-to-face. But the upfront piece in terms of the profile would be his job. The rest of it would be we working together. Dr. Behringer serves as my counsel, but he is retired from doing searches. But he's still quite available in terms of candidates, networks and those kinds of things, yes. Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Ricardo Coronado to the podium. And I understand you all have had a conversation. He's going to explain to us and hopefully get your agreement on how, if you become our search firm, you would work with our internal human resource department. Dr. Coronado.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman and Board Member.
Certainly. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman and board members. We're happy to work with the firm in terms of doing many of the things that we talked about. That is, when you want to meet with them, that would be one of them. We've got some proposed outline dates. But I think whenever we decide, and whenever you need them, we can certainly help with them. And I'll be glad to work with them as a liaison, as you wish. Some of the areas that we would like to make sure we're involved in is the equal opportunity part, compliance with federal laws, and making sure that our policies at Tarrant County College are followed, as well as other areas that we might want to look at as we begin to develop questions for you to ask candidates, that we follow some of those rules and maybe supplement those questions. I'm sure they have a good library of questions for you to use. In addition, looking at assessment tools, they're very good at recruiting candidates. They're very good at doing the search and developing this profile. And we want to just ensure that our instruments that you use are the very best in terms of matching up so we have an objective way of evaluating them, very similar to the process that you used in scoring or looking at companies. We can develop that based on the process that they use and that we use in terms of developing an assessment tool that's very similar to the ones that you submitted with your RFP, to align that with the profile of what we developed. So we'll be reviewing those to make sure we have the right questions along with the firm. And in addition to that, coordinating maybe all the travel that we have with the companies, and coordinating the interviews, the interview schedules along with the firm. In addition to that, looking at coordinating the public forums for the candidates when they come in. So when we get input from students, from our faculty, from our staff, from our stakeholders, from communities, and our partners, when we involve them, we have a way of getting their input and getting it back to you. And we'll work jointly with them in developing that survey. They've worked on them, using them before in public forums. So we will work jointly with them in making sure you get feedback on what others evaluate the candidates after you have. So those are the kind of things that we'll work with, and making sure we have that brochure out as soon as possible. A lot of the tacit things we can work on, as well as the strategic in terms of making sure we have the right candidates in, and looking at the demographics as well of those candidates, the diversity of those candidates. And they focus on those items as well. So we will work in partnership with them and with the board to make sure that your needs are being met as well.
Any questions about Coronado?
Yeah. Dr. Coronado, did you do the reference check?
No, that is always done by purchasing and procurement. They will always do that for the vendors.
Okay, so...
You're talking about for applicants?
You know, for Gold Hill. Okay. Because it looks like almost Gold Hill filled them out. They were almost spotless. Incredible references. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. William, the proposal submitted by your firm assumed a large search committee which would be... Thank you. Several meetings, more than we anticipate, having given the board being the search committee. And then, because we do have a very qualified, available human resource department at your disposal, will some of these changes impact the fee that was proposed in your submission? Is that a negotiable fee?
The fee that we offer is really non-negotiable in terms of the process. There are some fewer steps, but we feel that that's a reasonable fee, asking for what you're asking for the process.
Even with these changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
My concern is about the confidentiality. And I wanted to know your opinion of our personnel department having access to the applicants before we get to the finalists. Is that... Did I hear that being said? And is that a potential problem? Or what do you think about that?
It has been spelled out what that process is going to be here. We have, you know, in my five years of doing this, that has not been a problem. In most of those searches, the HR office handles those kinds of things, and they're very professional. And we just expect that that's what's going to happen. So I don't really see a problem if that is indeed the case. The key is who has access beyond that group to the materials. And that would be you as a search committee, as a board committee, would be us as the consultants.
Right. So, yes, I mean, I'm very confident of the expertise of our department. My concern was whether or not applicants might have a concern, and if that was not the norm. But since that's the norm, and then the applicants wouldn't necessarily have a concern, then I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If there are no further questions, I'm going to take us into executive session to seek legal counsel. Our acting chancellor is also our in-house attorney, so we shouldn't be long. We don't pay her by the hour anymore. So I would invite you through that door. There's coffee and cold drinks, and I think we will be back very shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We will, as soon as I gather my unruly group together, we... I will... Where's Mr. Behringer? Right here. Okay. I would like to reconvene the special board meeting at 3:10, and we have a motion. Excuse us. Mr. Marshall?
Go ahead.
We have a motion from trustee Ayala.
I make a motion to authorize the acting chancellor to negotiate a contract with Gold Hill Associates and to execute that contract as expeditiously as possible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Shelley, is she still there?
No.
No. Okay. I wanted to... Well, we have the proposed calendar for the process, which of course, like all calendars, is done in pencil. But we would like, if you all have time today, for you to meet with our Mr. Herndon, our procurement officer. And I have copies of the submissions from our stakeholders about their ideas. I also have a job description for the chancellor as is currently on file. If you... Do you need that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And other than that, I think...
Look forward to working with you.
Yes, we do. And we...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Welcome to our world. We're the best you've ever worked with.
Can we expect the best, right?
This is your lucky day.
Thank you.
And we expect...
Thank you so much.
But other than that, it'll be an easy day.
We're honored. Thank you.